This time I want to open our public hearing. We have a public hearing for amendment to section 405.185, outdoor public recreation district. Anyone want to address that issue?
If I can, Mayor. I'm going to be addressing it on behalf of the city if I can find my packet.
Snuck up on you, didn't I?
Yes, it did.
I see my friends from the fair board are here. Hopefully, we can shepherd this through. Basically, what we have in front of you guys is a request to change the text of the outdoor public recreational area. For background for the Board of Alderman, we changed, we created the OPR district, zoning district, a couple of years ago to resolve some issues with some of the uses out at the fairgrounds with what the zoning code actually allowed them to do. We worked in a cooperative effort to put that together. As the fair board has changed over in time, some of the desires of the community for the use of the fairgrounds have also changed. We before had a very restrictive use on it and listed the things that were allowed to be used. Now, what we want to do is, in working with staff and working in cooperation with the fair board, is to create a permitting process. It's an expedited process for them to hold special events. We worked on this with planning and zoning at the last planning and zoning meeting. There were some changes from the original submission that we worked with. And basically, what the process we want to present to you tonight and ask you to approve is a process that's a special event permit. This will allow them to have such things as the biker event, or a rock concert, or something out at this facility that is unique in its location to the metropolitan area of St. Louis and also within the Warren County community that will allow them to hold those type of events, but yet consider the residential surrounding districts of the Warren County fairgrounds. It is a special event permit. There will still be required, or we're asking there'll still be required, a public hearing. Originally, we're going to have the public hearing at the Board of Alderman level. Planning and zoning approved the special event permit text amendment, but they wanted to hold the public hearing on it and not have a public hearing at the Board of Alderman level. Part of the reason we only want to have one public hearing is that's the minimum required by statute, and it also creates an expedited process for them to get these approved, hopefully within a sixty day time period. So sixty days from when they apply and their application is submitted to completion, they can have approval for these special events. The public hearing will basically be an opportunity for city staff to give concerns, whether it's security concerns of the chief of police, whether it's concerns with wastewater use or water usage by Guy from Public Works, or any other thing that could be an input issue. We can present that at a public hearing. The zoning officer can put all that information together. We get recommendations for conditions of that approval if necessary. And then, we present to the Board of Alderman a report from the zoning officer, any reports about security or wastewater or land use from city staff, and also recommendations from planning and zoning for the Board of Alderman to review and either approve or disapprove the permit, and if they approve the permit, to consider any type of special conditions for that permit. The idea being that as the fairgrounds usage hopefully continues to grow and expand, that we can have a process that as these events come up and they're unique in each event, they can be considered for the event themselves. The applicant can come and present their event to the board, and really, the fair board can be in the business of leasing the property out and not have to have the direct involvement or the direct responsibility for what occurs at the event. We can hold the event holder directly responsible for it. So, I would ask that you guys consider this text amendment. It's something we worked with staff with the fair board to put together. I think it has everything, and we talked at planning and zoning, that these guys were looking for, and I'm sure they may want to make a statement or two. For purposes of the public hearing, I would ask that a copy of the public hearing notice that was published in the paper be made a part of the record, that the copy of the ordinances by reference be made a part of the record, and also a copy of the zoning officer's report. Any questions?
Any questions for councilor?
Chris? I just want to make sure that it might be a maximum of ninety days.
Maximum of ninety days. Hopefully, we're shooting for a sixty day term. Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a little bit of feeling out here as we go through this, and if it's not a perfect process, we can always go revisit again, but we think we've responded to some of the needs and concerns.
Anyone else want to speak on behalf of that or address that issue? I see Mr. Cobb and Mr. Wattler here from the fair board. Do you all want to address anything? Are you fine with what we're doing?
We have worked it through.
Great. Great. We thank you for your cooperation. Any other comments regarding outdoor public recreation? At this time, I'll close that hearing, and we'll open the Board of Alderman meeting for the City of Warrenton on February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Alderman Flake to lead this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Item three on the agenda is approval of minutes on the open and executive minutes from January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Any corrections or additions? I'll entertain a motion. If none?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the open and executive minutes from January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. On item three B, regular meeting minutes from February five, two thousand thirteen.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February fifth, two thousand thirteen.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the regular meeting minutes from February five, two thousand thirteen. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item three C, work session minutes from February five, two thousand thirteen, on meeting with outlet center representatives. Any concerns or questions? Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the work session minutes from February five, two thousand thirteen, on a meeting with the outlet center representatives. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
abstained. I was not present.
Motion carried five to zero with one extension. Item four, hearing from the public. Each meeting, we always give the public a chance to come forward, address the board. We ask you to come to the podium, give us your name, and keep your remarks to five minutes or under, and keep them civil if you may. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the board? Please come forward.
Thank you very much. I know you're very busy, so I'll be very brief.
Would you give us your name, please?
My name's Robert Fishbach.
Okay.
Everybody else meets a dog and kitty guy. First, I want to say that our police chief and our animal control is one of the best that I have ever worked with in any situation for adoptions. We have one full-time and one part-time officer that are finding homes for lost or abandoned animals, they're taking care of them, they're very passionate, and it's a privilege to work with them and be able to assist them. What I would like to ask of the board is, when we go onto the website for the city, sometimes it's a little hard to navigate to find a lost dog, a lost cat, or to find them for adoption, if it would be convenient or if you could help, to move something to the front webpage to direct them there quicker, so that if a little boy or girl has lost their puppy, that we can accommodate them a little faster and make it easier for the general public to find that link on the website.
Well, I think we can do that. We just had a work session tonight, and our work session involved the webpage, and we're going to take a look at redoing a lot of things on there. So, we certainly can take a peek at that and see what we can do.
One other issue I'd like to address is that in my work with the puppies and kitties, directing people to the animal shelter, a large majority of our citizens don't know where the shelter's at. If there's anything we could do to advertise, promote the location of the shelter, we do such good work as a city and the shelter, that people need to know that we are doing that work, that those officers are extending themselves, and they're doing such a good job. They need to know where it's at and how to locate it, so that they can help even further. I thank this board.
I think we might be able to help you on both those issues.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Anyone else from the public want to address the board? Hearing from no one else, I'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Alderman. Anybody from the board? I'll start with Mr. Clark on the end. Do you have any?
No.
Want to address? Alderman Kendall?
That's me.
Alderman Tallo?
No, thank you.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Flake?
No.
I saved him to last, because I know we can't sit here without talking. Alderman Cornell?
But of course I did. I did want to address a couple of things. As the mayor mentioned, we did just complete a work session regarding media and social media. I would like to encourage the city staff and also the other Board of Alderman and the mayor to consider how we are conducting those work sessions in a short period of time, sitting on this board. I very much believe that the city tries to do everything in a transparent method. That being said, I think that having work sessions that aren't, that are before the normally scheduled meetings are not necessarily conducive to people attending, and I think that sometimes people get the impression that we are trying to take care of the business ahead of time and vote on it at the meetings. So, I would encourage some kind of thought be put to how we can increase our transparency when it comes to work sessions, whether that is actually discussing more issues at the meeting, whether it is to continue with the work sessions, only have them recorded and attached to the video production of the board meetings, so that more people see what we are doing outside of the camera's eye and outside of the regular board meetings, so they can be more informed, especially as budget time comes up. The second issue that I want to mention is, as I looked at the agenda for tonight, there are several issues that are going to be addressed, and all of them come back to our staff. And one of the things, especially in this, it seems like we as a society have gotten to where we, it's us against the government, and government employees are sometimes vilified. But if you look over our agenda, and you start seeing that Michelle Schlinter, you're going to hear tonight about a grant that she received that is six times the cost of her salary to put in sidewalks that are needed. You're going to hear about Guy Geevers, who is trying to repair a vital part of our sewer treatment plant, kind of trying to make chicken salad out of something other than chicken and mayonnaise. The chief who does willingly use his own personal knowledge and does the IT side of it. Brad, you're going to hear about, instead of just sitting back and being an employee and waiting for us to give him direction to, hey, find out how we can light these ball fields in two years, and to take it upon himself to have a vision that we may need lighting down the road, to come upon and recognize the value of some used equipment that hopefully will save us tens of thousands of dollars down the road. I think that it is worthwhile to recognize that we have a staff of people here that are not just going through the motions and performing their tasks to the minimum and then going home. And I think they need to be recognized and appreciated for that. I'm done.
That's it?
That's it.
Good comments. Appreciate it.
I would like to ask a question. Melody, are our work session minutes on the website with the other minutes?
No, they are not. We can add them if you'd like. Do we have to click that? We can add them now.
We could put them on there without any problem?
Thank you.
Michelle Schlinter's not here tonight, so you're not going to hear from Michelle.
By that, we hear about.
You're going to hear about.
I wouldn't go stupid if you thought of her.
All right. Next item is mayor's report. I just got, I'll be real brief and short. I just got a couple of little things. I just want to remind the board that we do have a meeting Thursday night with Boonslick Regional Planning, and the topic for discussion is county-wide transportation and funding discussion. That's up at Boonslick Regional Office in their chambers room, so seven o'clock. And I assume, I assume that's open to the public, but I better not speak for them since they're hosting the meeting. Next meeting is Tuesday night. We have an ethics and training meeting for our elected officials, and that'll be here in the chambers Tuesday, twenty-sixth of February at six PM. And I would extend an invitation to any of the candidates that are running for Alderman position. You're invited to attend those ethics training. We require all of our staff to go through an ethics training, and we thought since we require them to do that each year, that we as elected officials should also go through the same ethics training. So, you're welcome to attend. And the only other thing I have is what Alderman Cornell alluded to. We received a grant thing from the Missouri Department of Transportation in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-eighty dollars and fifty-two cents, and that's part of the Safe Schools, or Safe Routes to School program. We're going to extend a sidewalk on South Forty-Seven from Warrior Ridge Avenue, extending it south to, I think it's Drive Park Crossing. Is that the name of the next road? And the reason that the application came about, we were led to believe by the school district that next year, they would probably not provide busing transportation for those subdivisions. If they lived, those residents were within a mile of the building or school they were attending, they would have to walk. And so, we kind of partnered up with the school district and kind of made an agreement that we would go fifty-fifty on this sidewalk issue unless we got a full grant for the amount of the sidewalk. So, we got the full grant. We're not going to partner up with the school now. We'll be able to put that project in ourselves. However, we are going to partner up with the school on a extension of the sidewalk on Pinkney Street, over by Warrior Ridge subdivision. We need to extend that so kids don't walk on the highway there. And the schools indicated they would want to welcome a partnership with us. So, my hat's off to Michelle Schlinter. She's the one that made application for the grant, wrote the grant. It was funded at a hundred percent, so we're happy and enthused about that. And that's all I have. And I'm going to item seven, I'm turning it over to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, and see what she has for us.
My first item for you this evening is the preliminary two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget schedule. I believe that you all had a copy of that in your packet. The first meeting of the board, and it typically is ways and means, but that has always been in the past for the last several years, it was the entire board who was present for that, to discuss the initial target payroll percentage and how you want us to proceed initially with that, as well as looking at the water and sewer revenues and any potential rate increases. That is the very first step in the New Year's budget process. There will be several other meetings along the way as we get further into that process, but I would ask you all that if you have capital items that you'd like to have considered in this budget, that you get those, that information to us by the April second meeting. We need to have time for whichever department those requests would fall into to do the work, to get pricing put together, to get information put together, so that any of those capital projects can be included for your consideration in the budget package. As well, any street projects or sidewalk projects that you have recommendations for, we would need to have those as well. And then, we'll do the work to get costs put together, so that you can consider those as part of your budget. This is the preliminary schedule. We typically start out with a preliminary schedule, and then we'll have changes along the way as it starts to come together, but this is the first step toward that budget process. Any questions?
Looks great.
Oh, yes. We're so excited. We're starting on budget. The other item I have for you is just to let you all know that we will be ordering iPads in the near future. We actually ran into a little issue last week that took some time, and we had planned on having those ordered, so I think within the next couple of weeks, we'll get those ordered, get them in here. The plan is to figure out exactly how we're going to get the information easily loaded on, and then schedule some training for all of you, so that we can share with you what the easiest ways to do that and access the information is. So, we'll keep you posted as that moves forward, but expect that within the very near future.
Terry, does the city have a copier that you can scan and send to your email?
Yeah. We haven't talked in detail about exactly how we're going to deliver the information. My anticipation is that you will get a, let's call it a download, and I know that's not the right term, but whatever it is, is going to come from the cloud and automatically come to your. Are you impressed? I learned that from my grand.
I heard that.
Like rain. It's going to rain down on you. Automatically go into your iPad, and you're going to click on it and open it, and there's going to be all the documents.
She's listening, isn't she?
The beauty of that also is that we will be able to make that file available out on the website, so that anyone in the public who wants to access that and download those same documents will be able to do so. So, we have to figure out some logistics, but it's certainly headed in that direction very quickly.
And we'll be saving a lot of trees.
Yes, we will.
We're going to be happy.
So, I think it'll be, once we all get used to it and learn how to use it to its full advantage, I think we'll find it to be very beneficial.
You'll wonder why we waited so long.
We'll need to be patient as we move forward. That's what I believe.
Any other questions?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I'm ready for item eight. Jack Tampf from planning and zoning, director of updates.
Chris, you going to do the fair board?
Well, I'm not going to talk very much now that we're not in the public hearing.
Yeah.
Fair board, we talked a little bit about it in the public hearing section, kind of what we presented. Do you guys have any questions? Kind of what's there, what's not there? Basically, we went away from just approving anything but traditional fair activities. And we talked about that at the last meeting. Those guys are okay with kind of that definition of what are traditional fair activities, which are mainly centered around the fair and other events that they've done traditionally. This really will require for events to go through this approval process. However, we think that it's a process in working with the fair board that will alleviate them of the immediate responsibility and also give us the opportunity to work with them to make sure that they put on a good, safe event, which is what everybody's interest is.
The P&amp;Z Commission was on board with this?
They wanted the change. They felt that, they felt that for time constraints, that would be better for them to be an information and fact gatherer through holding the public hearing and then having the planning and zoning officer present that information to the board for deciding whether to or to not have the event. The idea being that if they hold the public hearing, because we're only going to have one, traditionally, we have two, we're going to eliminate one public hearing, so that we can minimize the expense and the time constraints, that, you know, they'll have kind of a more dedicated time period to hold that, to allow Jack to prepare that information, and then if the Board of Alderman held the public hearing, you'd immediately be making a decision on it that night. Planning and zoning holds it, and there's some follow-up information they want to recommend the board to consider. The planning and zoning officer will have some time, or Jack and I working, or Terry or staff, to get some of that information and try to get some of those things worked out. So, I do think there's some value to them holding the public hearing, because it will give an opportunity for people to be heard. It'll be advertised, notification will be sent to the property owners, and if there's an issue, they can make recommendations on conditions for the approval of the event and give some time for that to be considered before it ultimately goes to you. But yes, they were okay with it.
Thank you for, thank you for the bridge version at the end.
Is this part of our ordinance in the back? So, we don't have, we're going to vote on that later anyway. Okay. Any questions for, on that issue? I think they explained it pretty thoroughly. The only thing I see is, I mean, the fair board has to be on board, that, got to give us plenty notice. I mean, it's not something that you're going to be able to, you know, say, next week, we want to have a, have an event. We have to go through the process. So, everybody's on board with that, we'll go forward. Thank you, gentlemen. What else, Jack?
Next on the list is a boundary adjustment, revision approval request for the existing boundary adjustment plat out at the Vills at Hawthorne to include, it's basically just relabeling it to include the sewer and utility easements on the northern one-point-one acre The original one that was approved did not clearly spell that out as the minimum ten-foot wide sewer easement, so we're just updating it to make sure that sewers are within an easement.
Clarifying that, cleaning that up. What else you have, Jack?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
I'm going to move to, thank you, Jack. Item nine, Greg Hotterschall, Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mayor. The only thing I have this evening is the Police Department's monthly report from January two thousand thirteen. Couple of things to note. You see, there's quite a discrepancy between the day shift numbers and the night shift numbers there for January. The vast majority of that is having our day shift officer back. That is a good part of it. And the other thing is, since the Newtown tragedy, we have been doing a substantial number of extra patrols at the schools, probably to the tune of at least ten to twelve a day. So, those numbers add up pretty quickly, and that accounts for the vast majority of those numbers. That's a program now that's been received pretty well by the schools, so they're kind of happy to see the extra officers in there. The other thing that I'm kind of happy to note is, we're actually seeing increased participation in the ride-along program. And I think I can credit Chris and his article and making a note of it in the paper to help seeing some more participation there. So, I'm pretty happy about that.
Can I ask age bracket, age group? Noticed any trend? None?
No.
Just variety?
Forty-four. I did a ride-along a couple of weeks ago.
I did a ride-along a couple of weeks ago, and it was enjoyable.
What night of the week was it, John?
It was a Monday night from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
You can stay up that late?
Went home and ate popcorn, stayed up another couple hours.
Wow. All right.
He must have worked very hard.
One of the things I usually tell, tell the public whenever someone does criticize the police department, that we've got too many officers or this or that, I ask them if they've done the ride-along program. And I encourage them to do that. I think it's educational to see what the officers do on a day-to-day basis and see what they experience, and I still encourage people to do that.
And I appreciate you doing that, that's really the whole idea.
Any questions for the chief?
Mayor, before you go on...
Sure.
If we can go back to Jack and get a vote on approved for the revised boundary adjustment for villas, we'll have to do an ordinance, but approve it tonight so we can go ahead and prepare the ordinance.
We can do that. It's on item eight B.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised boundary adjustment for the villas at Hathorn.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the revised boundary adjustments for the villas at Hawthorne. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you, Chief. That's all you have? That is. I'm ready for Recreation Director Dottie Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. I actually only have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is a recommendation to award the youth sports uniform bid to Blue Viking. You do have samples up there of the products that they would provide to us.
Okay. You might explain this, you've got, you've got two different bids here, one is the spring order bid.
Yes. The top section is for youth baseball and softball and T-ball, so that would be ordered March, April. Actually, I'm sorry, March. And then the second one is for soccer, for a fall order. So basically, the two different large orders were added together, and at the bottom you have the grand total of what those bids would have been.
And on the, on the first bid, you're recommending couple?
No, sir. The recommendation is to hire Blue Viking.
Okay. Okay. I see what you're doing now. You recommended Viking.
Was the product a better product than those that's higher?
Actually, there is, there were three bids that came in lower than Blue Viking. The first company was from Bedford, Ohio, they were the lowest, and chose not to go with them. First of all, have a concern about the delivery time and how quickly they can get it. It has been common, once you make your initial order, to then have to go back and do more orders because kids register late. And with more local companies, you know, you can order two or three shirts at a time and get those delivered in a reasonable amount of time and for a reasonable cost. The second lowest bid was J&amp;J Sports, and I actually referred back to the June 21st, 2011 board meeting minutes, and J&amp;J Sports had actually been awarded the bid at that time, but it was taken away from them due to some issue that had happened. It doesn't specify what that issue was, just that it was taken away and awarded to another bidder. So did not choose them. The third lowest bid was DRS, and DRS had, they actually had this particular bid in 2012. There were several issues last year with the T-shirts, and that was that there were different brands used, which did not comply with what they bid, so they actually gave us shirts that were not what they bid to give us. And so it created a couple of issues. One is it wasn't what it bid, what they bid, but two was that the colors were different, so what was orange may have been two different tones of orange, so you have a team of kids out there with two different tones of shirts on. Additionally, in addition to that, when the shirts were delivered, they had a very heavy smell of cigarette smoke, and staff had to put dryer sheets between the shirts to try to rid the shirts of that smell. So the fourth lowest was Blue Viking. Blue Viking actually used to be called Blue Duck, and they were located in St. Louis. I think they've recently moved to the location they're at right now, and I have had some experience with them in the past, and they, they were very dependable and delivered in a timely manner and provided a good product. The number five bid was from Phoenix, Arizona, and again, there's a delivery issue there. And then beyond that, six, seven, and eight, I felt that those prices were just too far out to even consider when we did have the other options.
Were these bids she'd sent out to some of the other local vendors?
Yes, they were. It actually was advertised in the paper, and anybody that, that we had contact information for, we did send the information to them to request, or so that they would have the opportunity to bid on it.
And I know that you weren't here when the, the problems, I guess, with the uniforms last year.
That's correct.
Ms. Thor, do you know, was there any attempt to remedy or contact with DRS to try and remedy that? Is there...
My understanding from the recreation staff last year was that there were many contacts made to attempt to try to solve the many problems that existed. I did not personally have contacted, but from communication with the recreation staff at that time, my understanding was that there were, were several contacts.
So it wasn't an issue where we had problems, we, we attempted to resolve it, and we didn't, we, they wouldn't resolve it satisfactorily?
Right. I think there were some problems that were attempted to be resolved, which resulted in some of the shirts that were a different brand was the remedy, which was unsatisfactory, and then other issues that occurred after that. So it was not just one incidence that was a problem. I think there were several.
Is DRS's bid in here? It certainly causes me concern anytime we're not taking the lowest and best, and we're also going away from a local vendor. But if, if it's a situation where we have used them before and had issues that were not addressed, I, I'm not so sure that we can...
Has he usually been our policy, Jim?
Go back down that...
If we had issues in the past, then that more or less gives us a reason not to use them, even though they are a lower bid, and that's in every aspect that we take bids on. If there's a history, that's not a good history. So I'm comfortable with what we've done here.
Make a motion to approve the bid by Blue Viking for spring and fall youth sports uniform bid in the amount of $7,589.50.
Sixty-nine.
Seven, five, six, nine, fifty.
I'll second that. Okay. Jack?
How do you... Don't break.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Tallo to accept the bid of Blue Viking for the spring order and soccer fall order in the amount of $7,569.50. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thanks for your hard work on that, appreciate it.
Public, anything else, Dottie?
No, sir.
Public Works Director Guy Giebers.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. You have the monthly report in front of you. Replace a couple catch basins on Northeast Street and Southeast Alley that were deteriorating, just needed to be addressed. We've replaced some fire hydrants at the wastewater plant that's been leaking, finished the parking lot at this complex, and we've been running our camera, camera for sewer mains, looking for cleanouts and looking for ionized, amongst other things.
I know you had a water main break over on Morgan Street. Would cause something like that to happen. That might have been a week or so ago.
Oh, the valve that broke.
A valve?
The top of the valve came undone. The bolts that hold the top of the valve rotted away.
Okay.
So we tried to replace, undo each bolt and replace it one by one. Put the, there's a gasket in there, if it leaks for a while, it washes the gasket out. So we had to shut the water off and pull the top off, put a new gasket on and put new bolts on.
Okay.
What was the situation, Guy, down there at the Water Street lift station? What was that?
The check valve in the valve that shuts the flow off to it, the check valve broke. And when the lift station pumps water, pumps it uphill to the force main, and the check valve failed, so all that water coming back, came back down through the pump. So when the wet well starts to fill back up, it calls for the pump to run again, and with the flow coming backwards, it went to, the pump went to start back up, and it tore apart the motor and the impeller and the shaft. So the check valve's bad, waiting for parts to come in on that. The motor was damaged, the impeller was damaged. We have the motor and impeller back, we're waiting for the other parts to come in. So we got a, we got one pump in operation, and we have a portable pump set up for a bypass, and we have to have it bypass. I can plug that into the force main and run our portable pump, so that's ready to go if we need to do that. Anything else?
Any other questions for Guy?
Next item I have is the suction and discharge hose that we put out for bid. And the low price is JGB Enterprise for $4,442.92. They came in way under compared to everybody else, and so I called the man, the company, and they actually manufactured the hose. The other companies, I guess, buy it from them and then mark it up. So that's why the price difference was so, so much.
So we're really, really doing, I mean, there's no quality difference there?
No. I wrote dispatching all the way out in paper under the specs, and then I made sure they sent me the specs, and I looked at and made sure they all jived. They did, so then that's when I made the phone call, that's why they're so much less inexpensive.
Yeah, 'cause when I first look at this bid, I'm thinking, how can this be?
They manufacture the hose.
They make their own product.
So I'd like the recommendation to go with JBG, JGB Enterprises.
Make a motion to accept the bid of JGB Enterprises Incorporated for suction and discharge hoses in the amount of $4,442.92.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the JGB Enterprises Inc. bid for the suction and discharge hoses in the amount of $4,442.92. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item I have is well eight. Well eight's not pumping. We're not getting any water out of well eight.
Well eight's out on Highway 47 North?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's one of our newer wells?
That's correct. It was, that was installed, I wanna say four years ago, no, 2010, I believe. Sorry. It was input operation on 7/15/2010. That was done by Harper Drilling. I've made numerous contacts with Harper Drilling, never got a return call. I called Flynn Drilling, they came out with no charge, maggered the motor, motor maggered fine. The only way to really realize, find out what's going on, pull the pump. That means pull the casing and the pump. The, I had, I called Flynn, Lane, and a few other ones, I've gotten two replies back on what they would charge just to pull the pump and look to see what's going on. There might be a hole in the casing, you might have something else going on, the impeller might be off on the pump. We don't real, don't know what to do, do we actually pull it out and lay it on the ground? So I got two bids right now to have somebody pull it and lay it on the ground and see what's going on.
So it's, it's not, not functioning at all?
Nope, it's down. Well seven is pumping to tank well eight. Haven't had no issues. We lowered the height of the well at eight, so well seven doesn't have to push the head up so high.
The, do you think there's a warranty on that?
I can't make contact with them. I've tried...
That means that they won't...
I've called them.
I mean, we, we need to take that in consideration the next time we, we require bids.
Right.
That if, if we're not gonna get a response back, we certainly need a...
Are they still in business?
I left a message.
So there's a phone number that answers and...
Yeah. I called Andy on his cell phone number, then I called the main office.
And where are they out of?
They're out of... That's lame.
Clinton?
Clinton.
Is, is that the, the sta, what is the norm on, on a warranty? Is there a reasonable belief that this would be under warranty?
I can't, I would, talking to Harper, I wouldn't have an answer for that. I did not ask Flynn what their warranty is. I guess I could have looked to see what the warranty was, what Flynn just put in at well six, but then Flynn's, I'm sure, would be different than Harper, what his warranty would be.
But the pump itself, manufactured a pump, wouldn't they warranty?
And it might not be the, the issues, it might not be the pump.
I mean, it may not be the pump, but it...
Might not be the, might the bolt, you know, could have broke a keyway off, and it's just sitting there spinning.
Till you get it out, you're not gonna know anything.
Till we laid on the ground and see what's going on.
My, my concern is, at this point, if we hire Flynn or whoever to come in and start working on this and repairing it, we're, we're not gonna be able to take advantage. I understand we're unable to get ahold of them at, at this point, but, you know, I don't know if we need to send certified letter, if we need to try and make personal contact, but I would hate to have to pay for somebody this, and it turns... contact, but I would hate to have to pay for somebody this, and it turns out this was under warranty, that maybe we just need to have the warranty enforced or have our crack attorney get on, on board on that.
My belief, Alderman Cornell, just based on other work we've had done in similar situations, is that if it is warranted, it will not include pulling the pipe out of the well. So I believe that we will have to bear that cost regardless, um, whether it is warrant, whether the motor is warranted or not. And I agree with you, I think if we can't get a response to Guy, then I think we need to have our attorney send them a letter to try to encourage them to converse with us.
So the, so our other wells are picking up the slack and handling it, no problem? Okay. Keep us advised on that. Any other questions on the well problem at number eight?
Next issue is the bar screen at the wastewater treatment plant. That's been damaged, and we're in the process of trying to piece it back together. Parts came in from the welding shop here in town. Some of the pieces need to be readjusted. We took them up this afternoon. We should get them back tomorrow if they get to it. We need to put it back in and see if we can get it to work. If it doesn't work, then we got problems.
It'll work.
It'll work.
It'll work.
It'll work.
You can get, get working on making that chicken salad.
Yeah. With the issue, when they, when they put the bar screen in, it can only go in one way. They didn't put another channel in for a bypass. And we're getting debris coming into the plant, so that's something that we're going to have to address quickly.
So how, how are you handling the debris that's coming in?
It'll, it'll come through the plant, and then on the outside of it, it runs through the carousel, and then before it makes it to the clarifiers, there's another grate that picks up some of the debris, but it's still running through pumps. You know, we're going to have to pull, we get something in the pump, we'll have to pull it and clean it out.
And kind of doing that manually?
Yes.
So what, what do you do at nighttime? Is that, are you able to be shut down at night?
No, it's, it goes all the time.
Goes all the time.
If something happens to the pump, it'll alarm, let us know we got an issue.
Alarm goes off?
Yep. So that, that'll have to be addressed.
Do you have any good, any good news for it? You're in a bad situation.
Got a heck of a buy on some suction hoses.
Yeah.
Thank you, Guy. Anything else?
I haven't, sorry.
Guy, is there any steps that we can take to improve the debris? I mean, stop the debris from coming down into the system?
We really need another channel coming in, so if we have this problem, we can bypass it. I talked to an engineer, and they make a basket type that we can set inside of a manhole coming into the plant, and we would have to manually lift it out and clean it and set it back in. If we can't fix the bar screen, we'll have to do that, to put that in and do it manually till we get a, an engineer to look at which side bar screen we need. So we, we don't want to put too small of a bar screen in, because if we upgrade the plant, it needs to be able to handle what we upgraded the plant with.
Yeah, sure.
Man, that employee's the one that really draws the short straw.
It's everybody. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Guy. Any questions?
You can volunteer, Guy.
Seen that done, no thank you.
I'm moving on to item twelve. Maintenance and Grounds Director, Brad Busch.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First on my list tonight is the monthly report. Been doing a lot of maintenance and a lot of cleaning, getting ready for spring, and what we've been working on.
How's the tree situation, whatever, cutting down the trees? How's that coming along?
All the, all the trees are down, cleaned up, finished the last one at the cemetery last week. We still have a few logs that we need to get out of Binkley, but we're waiting for the ground to either freeze up or dry up to haul those out on the, with Public Works with the skid steers. So other than that, all the, all the debris has been picked up, ground up, and gotten rid of.
Is there a market for the wood or anybody?
Not, those we couldn't sell this year, they were, they were pretty much hollow and rotten. They had, most of them were soft all the way through. We, they're up, a lot of them are on top of the hill for firewood, behind the dog pound. Next on the, on my list, if you have any questions, is the picnic table and bench This was for the, for fifteen eight-foot recycled picnic tables and twelve six-foot recycled benches. Nine of these will go out to the complex, the rest of the benches and the picnic tables will go to Binkley and Dyer Park. That's where these are going. And my recommendation is to go with Champlin Tire Recycling for the total price of $12,303.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the bid for the picnic tables and park benches to Champlin Tire Recycling for fifteen picnic tables and twelve benches, plus delivery in the amount of $12,303.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the bid from Champlin Tire Recycling for picnic tables and park benches in the amount of $12,303. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Seed bid.
Next we have the, the seed bid for our annual seeding of the ball fields. The, uh, one I'd like would be the Co-Op Association Number Two for the price of $7,920.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to approve the seed bid from Co-Operative Association Number Two in the amount of $7,920. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thanks for getting all those bids, Brad. That's, that's a good amount.
And the one that we had, the Co-op Number Two, is the Martha'sville MFA is what it is.
Great.
We're all...
Thank you.
Bit close. You're welcome. Next is the plumber bid. As, as you can see, again, this year we only had one, one bid, sent out to numerous plumbers, advertised in papers, called a lot of people, faxed a lot of stuff, and still only had one bid. So my recommendation is to go with Michelson Plumbing.
Except who currently has the bid?
Yes.
And we've been happy with their services?
No, when we call him, he, and he comes at all Saturdays, Sundays, all hours, especially with the pool.
Nobody wants to do plumbing, of course, I guess.
I'll make a motion to go with recommendation of the grounds and maintenance director to accept a bid from Michelson Plumbing.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to accept the general plumber's bid from Michelson Plumbing. Roll call on that, too.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
And Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Next is the lights for the ball field. I went through and tried to find as many places that sold what we were looking at, and on the, on the back of the, the first page there is the, the list. I took the lowest price of all of them, of the pole, the light, and the cross arm. Came to a total of $2,120, and times twelve, if we had to buy everything new, would be On the other side, Mrs. Null's proposal is $1,200 for each pole, and that includes the fifty lights, fifteen cross arms, and twelve telephone poles for a total of $14,400.
I'm sorry, I don't remember where, where we said we had money for this.
I have this in the Capitol East Side Electrical, was budgeted for $25,000. I have spent $7,099 on the, getting the new line put in, the new switchgear put in, and I have $17,901, approximately $17,901 left.
And Ameren's going to...
Ameren, I've talked to Jay Lewis at Ameren, and he said they would be willing to convoy all the poles and lights out to them, dig the holes, and also put them up bars.
That's great.
That's good. Thank you for, for getting, I'm the one that requested that you get the additional numbers, just so we can document that, um, this is in fact a good deal.
I should have had, but...
I appreciate that.
I should have had that to begin with, to give you all, so you all kind of knew where, where you were at, so.
Do you need our approval?
Yes, we do. Second.
Yep.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to accept the lighting for the athletic complex East Side bid from Mrs. Null in the amount of $14,400. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Brad, before you go on to the next item, I, I probably forgot to mention to the public that, that we didn't skip over the electrician bid. We're going to revisit that later?
Yes, next meeting.
So, uh, we, we're probably going to rebid that. So we're going to cross off item E, electrician bid.
Last thing I have is the approval to sell the eighty-nine Dodge pickup that we have.
Is it worn out?
It's finally, I'm, I'm finally throwing the towel in. Terry's managed to keep for this for quite a few years to get rid of it, and I'm, it's to the point now where I, I just can't justify sticking, putting any more money in.
Can't, can't piece it back together?
No, it's been, it started out as the, in Public Works, and I think it went to, I think it might even went to the treatment plant, and we got it back, so it's had a very rough, rough life, so.
Make a motion to approve the sale of nineteen eighty-nine Dodge truck.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the sale of a nineteen eighty-nine Dodge truck. All those in favor say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carried, zero, six to zero.
That's all I have.
That's it, Brad?
Yes, that's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item thirteen, I have City Clerk Melody Drew for our Local Government Week.
April twenty-eighth through May fourth is Local Government Week, and this year I propose the city have cookies and coffee for, all day for the citizens on Wednesday, May first, and for city employees, a sports and vacation beach themed shirt day, and with an employee luncheon on Friday, May the third.
Is the Board of Alderman invited to that, to mayor?
Sure.
Your employer?
Well, I just want to be sure. You need a motion on this?
Just your approval would be great.
Just approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
I won't be there.
You're not going to be there. That's right.
Was that by design? You're a resident.
I'll keep coming as a resident. You can still come in for cookies and coffee. Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Local Government Week.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve Local Government Week on April twenty-eighth through May fourth. All those in favor say aye. Opposed likewise? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, Melody.
What else you got, Melody?
That's all I have.
Okay, I've got some bills coming up that need to be approved for, and could order ordinances.
Make a motion for the, oh, I'm sorry. Call for the first reading of bill number six thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, for first reading of bill number oh-six dash thirteen.
In ordinance amending section four zero five point one eight five OPR Outdoor Public Recreation of the Municipal Code of the City of Warton, Missouri, adding a special event permit.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number zero six dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second final and passage, bill number oh-six dash thirteen.
In ordinance amending section four zero five point one eight five OPR Outdoor Public Recreation of the Municipal Code of the City of Warton, Missouri, adding a special event permit.
Roll call, roll, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Fourteen B.
Call for...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I was just going to say a bill, go ahead.
Call for the first reading of bill number seven dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall, for first reading of bill number oh-seven dash thirteen.
In ordinance making a determination pursuant to section three nine three point two seven five RSMO pertaining to a rollback of business license taxes on utilities and amending chapter six twenty of the municipal code by the addition of, of a new section in order to codify the same.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number zero seven dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second final and passage reading of bill number oh-seven dash thirteen.
In ordinance making a determination pursuant to section three nine three point two seven five RSMO pertaining to a rollback of license, business license taxes on utilities and amending chapter six twenty of the municipal code by the addition of a new section in order to codify the same.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. We have an executive session coming up. I'll entertain a motion to move to, to adjourn and move to executive session, discuss personnel and legal counsel.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to adjourn and move to executive session to discuss personnel and legal counsel. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Order to adjourn.